Thank you, Mr. Chair. Greatly appreciate that. So we are going to go ahead and discuss the cellphone policy regulation. We have some updates for you all in regards to some information that we have collected since our last meeting, and we wanted to also provide you with some recommendations for next steps. We've had numerous conversations with our administrators, with staff, and we want to be able to provide you with what our next steps are going to be for recommendations. So first, we are just going to go back from the beginning and review the timeline regarding our current cellphone regulation. We're then going to go ahead and review the difference between Governor Yonkin's executive order versus the guidance that came out from VDOE, because there is a difference in regards to what that entails, and we want to be able to outline each of those per what has come out from the state. And then, as I mentioned, we're going to review the information that we have collected based on staff feedback. We had administrative feedback for you all, but now we have staff feedback that we want to review, and then we have discussion of next steps. And as I've discussed with this particular process, this is currently a regulation, and we want to have a consensus in regards to what our next steps are going to be in regards to what changes we're going to make to align with what the state is recommending with their guidance. So with that...
I need to interrupt you for a moment from a point of, I think it's order. Mr. Chairman, I move that we bring Frank Funes into the committee meeting and I leave the committee meeting.
Do we need to vote on that?
I don't believe that requires an action, as Mr. Funes is already a member of the committee.
Yeah, but I'm not.
Correct. You've been appointed just for this meeting when we believe Mr. Funes...
Do I stay up here?
You can stay up here. You've been appointed to this committee just for this meeting, but Mr. Funes is welcome to join us as well.
Fine.
You thought you were going to escape.
I rescind my motion.
Yes. Sit down there, Mr. Frank.
Hi, Mr. Frank. Glad you're here.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bell.
I apologize.
No worries. All right, with that, I will now hand it off to Mrs. Jordan, and we will go from there.
All right. Good evening, Chair and committee members and board members. We, as Dr. Hummer mentioned, we are going to start from the beginning. As you may remember, the cellphone regulation has been a point of conversation for this board since early last year. We started in March 14th of 2024, when we had met with the SCSC to discuss input that had been collected from various stakeholders, which included teachers, students, parents, administrators regarding the concern about cellphone disruption to the instructional time. We also gathered input from this committee regarding what the new regulation, or rather the updated regulation, should look like based on that input collected. And then fast forward to July 9th of 2024, Governor Yonkin did release his executive order number three, where he directed various state agencies to take actions to look into how we could create a cellphone-free education for the children of the Commonwealth. And while this was going on, we had worked to form our new regulation regarding the, or rather, the cellphone policy, about what it would look like for the upcoming year. And that regulation was signed by Dr. Hummer and then released to the SCPS community on August 1st, 2024. The Office of Media and Communications did a push to ensure that staff, as well as parents and students, knew before coming into the new school year what the new expectations were under this new regulation. And then on September 17th, 2024, the VDOE did release its final guidance, as it was required to under the governor's executive order. And one of, there were a lot of things in the guidance, but the primary takeaway is that it did recommend a bell-to-bell restriction of cellphones at all three levels, elementary, middle, and high school. And then if you remember, we did meet on December 6th, 2024. This committee met to talk about our current cellphone regulation, the governor's executive order, the final guidance from VDOE, and we actually looked at data to determine how effective our cellphone regulation has been for this current school year. That was then later discussed on December 10th, with the full school board at the monthly meeting, and it became clear that the school board wanted to have deeper conversations about what the cellphone regulation looked like currently in light of the new guidance issued from VDOE. And there was also instruction to release a survey specifically to teaching staff, which we will talk about a little later on. And then, of course, well, actually, no, we'll talk about it right now. January 10th of 2025, a survey was issued to all building staff that was directed to teachers to provide input on whether or not they believe the effective, whether our current cellphone regulation is effective at removing the distraction of cellphone use. So currently, just a review of what our current cellphone regulation says. For elementary, middle, middle school, as well as students at INREB and Dow J, all portable communication devices, specifically cellphones, must be silent and put away during the day. Any portable communication device accessories, such as the AirPods or headphones, they may only be used during the school day as permitted by the student's teacher and only the devices that are owned by the school division. Because we also noted in the feedback we received from stakeholders that sometimes the Apple Watches, the AirPods were equally a distraction. The primary difference is at our high school level. We did give high school students the ability to have access to their cellphones during specific parts of the day, particularly during lunch and during class transitions. Otherwise, the cellphone must be silenced and then put away. The regulation regarding the use of accessories was the same as all other levels. Yes?
I have a question, Mr. Chair, if I may. Have we defined what "put away" means?
We have not. We would use the natural language of what "put away" is.
Which is?
Not out of sight.
So they can have it in their pockets, in other words?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Could you repeat, okay, could you kind of repeat when you were talking about, I think you were talking about high school and not having, they were restricted having the cellphone during certain times?
I'm sorry, I missed part of that question.
Okay. I believe it was right before you closed, you said something, you talked about elementary and middle school, and then you went to high school, and you said they could, that during certain...
It was during instructional time.
They could not have the cellphone used? Is that what you said?
Yes, Ms. Martin. At the high school level, they still must keep their cellphones put away during instructional time. The only time high school students are permitted to have access to their cellphones would be during the lunch period and when they're transitioning from one class to another.
Okay. Well, what I've been told, what I have been told by people who actually attend those schools is that that's not being followed. They're using their cellphones...
Yes, and that is, we will get more into the details of the teacher survey that went out and the responses they provided, and that was mentioned in some of the responses we received. However, under our current regulation, if a student were to take out his or her cellphone during instructional time, the teacher would have the ability to issue a disciplinary action, because that would be a violation of our current cellphone regulation.
Mm-hmm. Apparently, they're not doing it.
The other parts of our cellphone regulation, we do have strict prohibitions. Cellphones are not permitted at all within restrooms or locker rooms. On school buses, they are permitted, as long as they do not cause a major distraction or create a safety hazard. And then during extracurricular activities, that will be determined by their teacher, their leader or coach regarding their cellphone use.
Mr. Chair, with regards to extracurricular activities and being allowed to have the cellphones on buses specifically, is this, does this include field trips, which are by nature an extension of the classroom? Are they allowed to have their cellphones on the bus during field trips? Because then, obviously, their phone will be with them at the location of the field trip.
Yes, because it would be on the school bus, and it would not be during instructional time.
Okay.
All right, we also carved out certain exceptions, because as you know, we do have students with varying needs, and we wanted to make sure we still met those needs. So our exceptions are specific for students who have a medical reason to have their phone. One of the most common exceptions would be if a student has diabetes and they use their phone to track their blood sugar levels. Another exception is for a student whose IEP or 504 plan or any other special education services require them to have more access to their cellphones. And then, of course, we do have sort of a catch-all that does allow the school administrator to authorize the student to have more access, but that would be on a case-by-case basis based on that student's needs. Now, back in December, we did look at similar data as this, but we looked specifically at the time period from August to November. This has been updated to now reflect August to January. And currently, our cellphone regulation is reflected in our Student Code of Conduct handbook. So if a student violates that, there is this specific S-bar code, which is BSO-13. That means that they have violated our policy regarding portable communication devices. And so our Office of Accountability and Assessment has tracked that data, depending on how many disciplinary events we have received. And based on the current data, if you look at the last school year, 2023 to 2024, the incidents have decreased by about 67.2%. If you remember, back in November, we looked at the same timeframe, it was at 70.4% of a decrease. But overall, there's a pretty significant difference between these disciplinary events from last school year compared to this school year. And then, oh, I'm sorry, I hit the wrong button. There we go. And this chart just gives, provides you a different visual. You can see the blue columns reflect the time from August, the start of that school year until this time in January, and you can tell the current school year is significantly lower, and that's compared to the red columns, which reflects the entire school year.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I'm wondering if this encompasses all of the schools, elementary, middle, and high school? Or is it just middle and high school, or just high school?
It is, my understanding, it encompasses all schools, because they collect, they look specifically at the disciplinary events that have the BSO-13.
Is there any way to flesh out the differences in the different school?
I believe so. I can definitely check into that.
Absolutely, we can do that.
Could we, please?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right, before I move on to the next section, do you have any questions that you haven't already asked? Okay. All right, so now we're going to look at the governor's executive order. Back in July 9th, 2024, the governor did direct several state agencies to start taking immediate actions to address the concerns with cellphone use during the instructional day. And one of those directives is that the VDOE would issue final guidance that local divisions could use to create policies that would help promote a cellphone-free education. On September 17th, the VDOE did issue their final guidance, and again, the primary takeaway is they wanted a bell, they recommended a bell-to-bell restriction of cellphones at all levels, elementary, middle, and high school. There were some differences between the elementary and middle, primarily, the elementary is that it must be away during the entire school day. The middle school level, there was a little bit more flexibility, where it said the cellphone should not be easily accessible to the student during the school day. And then it also taught specifically about use of cellphones on campus grounds after the instructional day was complete. The guidance also addressed high school. Again, it was a bell-to-bell restriction, but then they did say that they could be used before and after school on campus. And then, of course, it noted that there should be exemptions in policy regarding students with a language barrier or a disability, and as we've covered, our policy has already carved out those exceptions. So essentially, our regulation for elementary and middle school levels are in step with the final guidance from VDOE. The primary difference is at our high school, our three high schools, in that we do allow students to have access during lunch and during class transitions. Any questions?
Go ahead.
No, please, go to Chair.
One clarifying question. So if we revisit this, what would that require? We would have to amend 219R? Is that what I'm hearing?
That, based on the feedback we receive from the school board, yes, we would look at making amendments to our regulation.
Okay. And I know I might be getting a little bit ahead of it, but can we make, can we make those future active? So can we predate those? So one of the things that we talked about at that last full board meeting was that we wouldn't want to make a change right in the middle of the school year, but we would have an appetite for a conversation about a change to take effect before the fall '25 school year.
Yes, and that would be the recommendation if the school wants to, or, sorry, if the school board wants to move forward with further restrictions, to wait until the beginning of the next year, because we do believe that part of the good results that we have received is because everybody went into the school year knowing what the expectations were versus trying to scrambling in the middle of everything else going on during the school year to adjust. So that would be the recommendation, and there's a couple of ways you could do that. You could go ahead and sign the regulation now with the effective date of the 2025, 2026 school year, or we could have Dr. Hummer sign the regulation in the summer, and then it would be ready to go, and the Office of Media and Communications could do the push to communicate to the community about what the new expectations are.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I may. We had to submit our plan because it differed from the governor's action to Richmond, did we not?
No, we didn't. This is just guidance from VDOE.
Well, actually, what Mr. Bell is referencing is that the state required every school division to provide whatever their policy or regulation is, and we have done that. We complied with that, yes, sir.
And are we in, so my question is, are we in compliance with the governor's edict?
So that's what I was trying to share earlier, is that the edict that came out from the governor was he directed those three agencies to put forth guidelines for what the cellphone policy... right in the middle of the school year, but we would have an appetite for a conversation about a change to take effect before the fall '25 school year.
Yes, and that would be the recommendation if the school wants to, or, sorry, if the school board wants to move forward with further restrictions, to wait until the beginning of the next year. Because we do believe that part of the, the good results that we have received is because everybody went into the school year knowing what the expectations were versus trying to scrambling in the middle of everything else going on during the school year to adjust. So that would be the recommendation. And there's a couple of ways you could do that. You could go ahead and sign the regulation now with the effective date of the 2020, 2025, 2026 school year, or we could have Dr. Hummer sign the regulation in the summer, and then it would be ready to go. And the Office of Media and Communications could do the push to communicate to the community about what the new expectations are.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I may, we had to submit our plan because it differed from the Governor's action to Richmond, did we not?
No, we didn't. This is just guidance from VDOE.
Well, actually, what Mr. Bell is referencing is that the state required every school division to provide whatever their policy or regulation is, and we have done that. We complied with that, yes, sir.
And are we in, so my question is, are we in compliance with the Governor's edict?
So that's what I was trying to, to share earlier, is that the edict that came out from the Governor was he directed those three agencies to put forth guidelines for what the cellphone policy regulation needs to be. So the guidelines, the ones that we vary from, as Mrs. Jordan has just mentioned, would be in the hallways and during lunch.
Right, I understand that.
Right. So, so that is what the difference would be. So compliance, I don't say would be the word, but we, we have tailored that to meet the needs of our division, which we can change that.
But we're not in trouble with Richmond as far as what we're doing right now?
No, and that is correct, Mr. Bell. So we had that conversation with the state in regards to any guidance that comes out from VDOE in regards to what authority does the school board have and the school division have in regards to varying from that. And we do have the authority to tailor to meet the needs of our school division.
Okay.
They, and when we asked them, well, what would the penalty be? And they said, there isn't no penalty. It would just be listed on the website as this is what their current policy and regulation is.
Okay.
So there's no ties to losing any funding. There's no ties to getting any sort of dings. And that is what they reported to us when we had that conversation. If you pay attention to what's happening across the Commonwealth, this is varying. We are noticing that a lot more school divisions are going in suit and not allowing it during lunch in the hallways, but there are some school divisions that are doing that as well.
And if I'm understanding the sequence correctly, just the chronology of it, we couldn't possibly have done this because it didn't come out until September. So that, that specific guidance about off and away during the whole school day was after our current regulation went into place.
Correct. Essentially, we, we were ahead of the game on this one. We were already looking to create an education free of distractions from cell phones. And our regulation was based specifically on the feedback we received from our stakeholders, which was our parents, our teachers, our students and our administrators.
And Mr. Chair, if I can add to that, because that is a, a good observation there, that a lot of the divisions that are getting a lot of attention are the school divisions that didn't have any policy or regulation. So this is ones that they are just starting this process after the fact where we're just essentially reviewing our own.
Sure.
Yes.
Correct. And there are several divisions throughout the Commonwealth who currently have the, the caveats like we do where students can access it during transitions and lunches. Some of them have said that they're moving towards a more restrictive in the new school year. So it is varying across the Commonwealth.
Thank you.
All right. So as, as we mentioned, there was a survey released to all building staff directed to our teachers specifically regarding the effectiveness of the new cellphone regulation because we wanted to hear directly from our teachers about whether or not our regulation was working. So we're going to go through several of these, these results. And please stop me if you have any questions. So the first, we did receive a total of 501 responses. Out of that, 476 were teachers, 18 were administrators. So all in all, that was a pretty good response. The first question was, is cellphone use in your classroom disruptive to teaching and learning? 60.1% of them said, said yes, and 39.9% said no. When asked...
What do they teach?
What's the secret?
When they were asked how cellphone use is a distraction, they were able to provide a narrative. There were 218 responses we received, and I will say, one of, there were a lot of varying responses we got, but one of the primary themes is the distraction of reminding students to put their cell phones away. That was one of the primary ones.
Ms. Jordan, I did kind of, I just, I thought, I thought I heard you say 39% of our teachers didn't think cell phones in the classroom were a distraction. Was that right?
Other way around.
They were a disruption.
39% said that they are not. 60% said that they are.
So we, I, that, that number, that astonishes me. I, 39% of our teachers don't think looking at a screen, they're trying to teach, is a distraction. What, are there two brain cells fight for a third place trophy?
No, I hear you because that's definitely across the board would be, someone would think that's just kind of common sense. It's a distraction. But having read through a lot of the...
You were saying a common virtue.
Having...
I am so disappointed in our teachers on that one. 39% of our teachers don't think looking at a cellphone is a distraction.
So having read some of the individual responses, and I don't know if everybody else had a chance to do that, but I did see various reasons why people said yes or no, and I think varying degrees of enforcement. And the most often cited difficulty that I saw was the transition, yes, you can, no, you can't, yes, you can, no, you can't. It's just unenforceable in its current form.
Well, and that, if, we do have other questions that kind of drill into those specific points because I think you're right. I think really what we're seeing here, because it is an overarching question, it really is going to depend on how people interpret the question. Some of those no's may have been, well, it's not a distraction right now. Some of them may have interpreted it differently, but that's why we provided in the survey a bunch of more specific questions to try to pull out that more specific information.
Before we go any further, and I was derelict in not doing this before, are any of the other board members, do you have questions about any of the presentations so far? Ms. Martin, I don't want to make sure everybody gets a chance to...
I, I, the only, I don't have a question necessarily, but whoever that was, I think it was Mr. Atkins, but I'm not sure. But I absolutely agree that I cannot believe that a teacher would say, oh, it's no distraction for me. If I was up in front of a classroom to teach anything, I would not want that to fight cell phones.
And just at the risk of belaboring, Ms. Martin, I think one of the reasons we saw a no, for instance, one of the responses I remember seeing from one of the high schools was, no, it's not a distraction in my class because I don't allow it. So it's not, you know, no, it's not a distraction because I don't think cell phones are distracting. Their, their answer was, no, it's not a distraction because I don't allow it. So it's probably a mix of both.
And I think too...
Well, then, that was an incorrect answer.
Well, I think too, Ms. Martin, this is only the first question in the survey. I don't think it was a one-question survey. There was many more, and I, I think Ms. Jordan got a little cut off. She was about to say that there was, there will be more questions that drill down into this question as we move forward. So hopefully, we'll get some more clarity. Because I, like you and Mr. Atkins, I'm rather shocked as well.
Correct. We have a lot more questions to go through that provide a little bit more clarity about where our teaching staff is. So the next question was, how many times in the last week have you had to informally address disruptive student cellphone use in the classroom? And as you can see, the, the largest majority said zero, and then the next was one to five. So specifically, we had 496 responses. 251 of them said zero, zero times. 164 said one to five times. 51 said six to 10 times. 11 said 11 to 15. And then four said 16 to 20, and then more than 20 was 15. So that kind of breaks down the responses and the different levels that we're seeing. The next question was, does the current cellphone regulation help you reduce disruptive cellphone use during instructional time? And as you can see, 76, 78.6% said yes. It does help them cut down on, on the disruption of students using their self, cell phones during instructional time, which is consistent with what we've been, we've been hearing. Of course, there are 21.4% that said, no, it doesn't help, help, which is consistent with the other data points that we've collected, collected in the survey. The next question was, is the current cellphone regulation easy to enforce? Because I'm, I'm sure we can all imagine what it's like to have a number of high school students in your class trying to manage cellphone use and teaching the curriculum. But we did receive a 75 point, 9% said yes, it is easy to enforce, and so that was encouraging.
Ms. Jordan, that's across elementary, middle and high, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Then we asked, do you believe the current cellphone regulation is effectively protecting instructional time? Again, we saw this increase a little bit. It's 80.4% said yes, 19.6 said Would a regulation that prohibits cell phones from being out at all during the school day help resolve disruptive student cellphone use? 69.3% yes, said yes. 30.7 said no. And the following question was, if FCPS were to change the regulation to prohibit cell phones from being out at all during the school day, when would you recommend this change to the regulation be implemented? 62.3 said prior to the next school year. We had 30.7 said during the current school year. And then we had 7% provide different answers. I did go through, and they were able to provide a narrative. I did go through those and tried to take kind of the main themes of, of what I saw. Out of, there were 36 that responded other. Out of those 36, nine said they wanted it implemented now, five wanted it to be implemented next year, and 11 said they do not agree with the change. So it was kind of a mixed bag in their responses.
So we're looking at, what, 93% of those surveyed believe a change is a good thing based on this graph? Either 30, 30% of them think during the school year would be a good time to do it, and then the 62.3 would be...
Well, we took as a given.
Well, to clarify, the question was, if we were to change...
Okay.
When would you want us to change?
I see.
I think what you're looking at, or what you're thinking of is this one where we asked, would a more restrictive regulation help?
Only 69%. I got you.
And so it's 69.3%.
All right. And, okay, thank you.
Yes. And that, that is all of our survey responses. We'll get to next steps. But before I move on, does anyone have any questions?
So one of the things that I wanted to say thank you for is the ask that I made back in December, that this go directly out to staff. I think some of the most helpful emails that I have gotten in the past few months have been directly from classroom teachers, especially over at Millbrook High School. For some reason, that's been where I've gotten most of them from, from teachers with really detailed cases for why they think what they think. And so I'm really happy to see data that didn't get filtered, that we got to see directly from the classroom teachers. The other thing that I'm curious about in this is there, if you could go back two slides, there was a question about, would a regulation that was more strict help resolve it? Of the 30% that said no, we don't exactly know why, whether perhaps they don't think we need it, or they don't think that it would be enforced. Some of the feedback in the narrative said that the rules are great, but they don't feel as if their building administrator actually enforced the policy, or at least didn't do so consistently. One of the other ones that I saw repeated was that when students are directed to give up their phones, it becomes a fight. And so I think those are helpful pieces of context around no in this question.
Well...
Correct.
If I may, so on the, on the fight about taking cell phones, if we eliminate cell phones entirely, then there's no, there's no fight to be had. I'd like you, I've been a lot of emails or calls, and, you know, mostly coming from Millbrook, some Toronto, but, you know, those are my two schools and, and the district. But I, I think a lot of people are saying that it's not being enforced. And if it's not being enforced by certain teachers or administrators, I have a doubt that you expect the students to follow it. So I think part of this needs to be, how are we going to hold our staff accountable for enforcing the policy? Because we've had this discussion before, and, you know, Dr. Hummer, you said my staff will follow the policy, or there will be consequences. Well, they're not following the policy. And, you know, I've, I've yet to hear about the consequences of them.
Ms. Jordan, was there more beyond the, the summary? I didn't want to, I didn't want you to not to have a chance to finish. I saw, before I asked you to rewind.
Oh, no, that, we've covered all of the survey responses. Of course, in the survey themselves, we did give teachers the ability to elaborate, which I didn't include here because it was too much to try to put on one slide. But the board members do have access to the responses, and so everyone can see all the narratives that were provided from the various teachers.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I just checked my email, Ms. Jordan. I did not get an email with all the, the narratives. Is that, is there a link?
It's in the weekly.
It's in the weekly. Fantastic. Okay. Because I think having those, speaking to those, and thank you, Dr. Usken, for speaking to those. I think it gives those of us sitting in this room as well as folks watching a little more insight as to where our teachers' heads are. Because I, like you all, have received a plethora of emails from teachers, very good ones, saying that we need bell-to-bell because the creep of trying to, the classroom creep, and that's my terminology, into the classroom of the cell phones, of them trying to get everything under control. Here, now we've, now we've eroded five, 10, 15 minutes of class time while a teacher is just trying to get kids to put their cell phones away. So I'm, I'm tired of it. I wanted bell-to-bell yesterday, so wish we could vote. I know it's a work session, but I'm all on board for bell-to-bell. Let's just eliminate the threat and get it out of, get it out of the classroom.
And, and I really, really appreciate that. I also appreciate that there's kind of two separate conversations going on, A, about changing the policy, and B, about enforcement. And Mr. Atkins, I don't want you to think that I didn't answer or didn't, you know, didn't recognize that because that was definitely one of the narrative responses in that Excel spreadsheet in the weekly that we saw repeated several times. Also, Ms. Jordan, sorry, I think Mr. Bell and I can agree that sometimes teachers make the worst listeners and students, and we're sorry for interrupting you so much.
What?
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Absolutely.
When I came up with doing this early last year, my, my goal was that we would be bell-to-bell, not having the phones, and then the board directed otherwise. Having been through the schools quite a bit here of late, I, I know when I toured the high schools, I think the first high school I toured was Millbrook, and I was shocked of all the kids that had, I don't know what you call them, the AirPods or whatever. They all had them in there. They had them in their ears in the class. They had them in their ears in the hallway. And I knew nobody was paying attention to anything that was going on. But having been back since we've enacted that policy, I did not, have not seen one AirPod in anybody's ear. I've never seen a kid violating the policies, and I've been through all the high schools since that time. And I'm not, the thing with this survey here, 37 of them are 37.7%, or 30.7%, I, I, there's always going to be that, that margin as far as I'm concerned that don't want to get with the program. I know quite a few teachers in Frederick County and quite a few teachers have told me that the policy is working. I mean, me personally, I'm still a bell-to-bell advocate, and I haven't changed my mind on that since I first brought this policy forward. But we have, it has seriously impacted the disciplinary situation. No one can argue that. So it is working to a degree. From what I understand, I mean, there has been some positive movement in our SOL scores, if I remember correctly.
Yes.
And, and although we still have a long way to go, I have to think that this is helping that effect. So I've heard a couple of statements that they're not doing it, they're not doing it, which is a blanket statement. And I'm here to tell you, I've been in the schools and I've seen them doing it, and I've had the teachers come up to me. And I'm not saying that there aren't teachers that really don't want to get on board with this policy and that they are allowing things to happen that they shouldn't be doing. But to make a blanket statement that our staff isn't doing their job, I don't think that's an accurate reflection of it, and that's all I have to say about it.
Thank you, sir. Just in the interest of time, I know number five we got on our agenda is discuss next steps. Mr. Bell, you wanted to say something before we moved on.
Yeah, first, I want to thank Scott for saying that about our teachers and our staff. I think that the blanket statement of saying our teachers aren't doing their job is absolutely erroneous. But I just want, from a real perspective, I teach at Johnson Williams Middle School in Clark County. They started their bell-to-bell schedule of not having cell phones three years ago. And the first year was rough. There were a lot of kids who were still violating the policy. The second year, and I wasn't there at that time, the second year, which was last year I attended, I was a teacher there, and I had maybe 10 violations in my classroom the entire year. This year, now we're in February, I've had zero. So while it will take time, it goes, the, the positives come about quite quickly. So I think having a bell-to-bell, I, I'm absolutely in agreement with having a bell-to-bell. So that's, that's my two cents.
One of the things I think it's also worth noting, and this is something that, and I don't want to put him on the spot, but I see Ben out there in the audience too as an administrator, is something I'm sure that, that he can tell us more about. The number of times I hear, Brian, almost all of the... The number of times I hear, Brian, almost all of the discipline coming up across my desk is still connected to a cellphone. So it's the, hey, let's meet up and do this, it's the, hey, let's meet up and do that, it's the, hey, I'm posting this TikTok, it's the, hey, I'm posting this video. And so I think the more that we can nip away at this, the better, instructionally, the better behaviorally, the better job satisfaction for everybody. No, that's a little bit of an editorial, but...
So, Mr. Chair, and I think I've heard the consensus across the board, so there's two things I want to address. The first is, if the consensus is to go to a bell-to-bell, and I'm understanding to start at the beginning of next year, if I'm understanding that correctly, then we will go ahead and make that change. And then we'll work with Mrs. Jordan in regards to what the effective date is. I would recommend, I know Mrs. Jordan had provided two of those examples of how we can roll this out for next year. I'm going to say the earlier the better, the earlier that we can get this out to our families and to our students to say, starting next year, that they will no longer be allowed, it's off bell-to-bell, period. And then we'll make sure that that is enforced for next year. So if you guys are all good with that, we'll go ahead and make that change. Secondly, I do want to add, thank you, Mr. Atkins, for sharing that concern. And I do want to share two examples of us holding our staff accountable, is that we are holding our staff accountable. If we know that something is not being enforced, we want to know about that. And I worked with one of our administrators who shared with me a story this school year about a particular teacher who was allowing their child to, or students to use the cellphone, and another student actually reported it. And we looked into it, and we held them accountable as we worked through that. And another situation, very similar, another, a group of teachers knew that another teacher was allowing their kids to use the cellphone. They did it in a professional manner, we addressed it, and we handled it accordingly. So those things are going to happen, and those are the things that we need to know about so that we can enforce it, so that we can have more of a consistent accountability across the board with all aspects of our code of conduct. So with that being said, no vote is necessary. We'll go ahead and make that change and adjustment, if you guys are good with that, and we'll continue to work with our administrators to make sure that we're enforcing it accordingly.
Of course, there was one other piece in the narrative that I want to make sure that we get to before we adjourn. There were several people that asked about cellphone blockers or jammers or some kind of technology, and I didn't want them to think they were being ignored. It's illegal in the Commonwealth to even own one of those devices, let alone operate one.
Wait, what?
Yes, because they interfere, they interfere with emergency communications. And so lest people think we don't read their narrative responses, oh, we do. Mr. Bell, is there a motion on the floor?
There might be. Mr. Chairman, I move that we adjourn this meeting post haste.
There's a motion on the floor to adjourn the meeting, and I'll second that motion. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of adjourning our meeting?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
We are adjourned.